This episode of the Full Armor Radio is brought to you by CR 101 Radio Network. CR 101 Radio Network is a Christian reconstruction internet radio station that hosts and broadcasts lectures, sermons, and podcasts 24/7. You can learn more at CR101radio.com. We're also brought to you by GCS Apprenticeship Program, which is dedicated to training the next generation of Christian teachers so they can own and operate successful and profitable Christian schools. You can learn more at GCSEsApprenticeship.com. And now to the show. Hello, welcome to Full Armor Radio. I'm your host, John O'Rourke. And today's episode, I wanted to get into a really important subject. I wanted to talk about my experience with talking to civil magistrates, in particularly talking to city council here locally, about making your local city a sanctuary city for the unborn. I've been contacted by a few people, just asking about how I did that, how the experience was, and what I learned from it. So I thought, you know, it may be a good idea to just put that out here as one of these podcasts to help anybody who's thinking about going to their local city council or their county to try to make their area outlaw abortion and get rid of any abortion clinics that they may have, and get rid of abortifacient drugs as well. So I wanted to talk about, just a little bit about the experience that we have, and what I would do differently if I had opportunity to do it again. So in Bristol, Tennessee, we have an abortion clinic. It's the only abortion clinic in my immediate area. And so we decided to go to the Bristol City Council. They're public meetings where you can go and speak before the city council members and basically make any request that you want with regard to city business. So there's the mayor, and then there's the other city council members. Usually up on the stage there, up on the desk, is the city manager, as well as the city attorney as well, who are not part of city council, but they are important advisors and have really important roles. But I'll get to that in a little while. So we decided to, in the first place, go and just speak publicly at the public city council meetings. For Bristol, they do them once a month. So we decided to go and speak and implore them to shut down the abortion clinic and to outlaw abortion in our area via a city ordinance. So let's talk about that for just a minute. I'm not going to go over in detail everything about, you know, city council and city ordinances outlawing abortion right now. But basically, the idea is that the city that you live in, that has an abortion clinic, can interpose itself in between the state and the unborn who are being murdered. So basically, what that means is that they're standing in the gap between an unjust law up here at the state level, and then down at the, you know, so they can protect those who are being victims of the unjust law, namely, in this case, the unborn who are being murdered. So for example, Tennessee state regulates abortion. It doesn't outlaw it. It lets you do it. So what we're asking the city to do is to stand in the gap and say, no, Tennessee state laws are unjust with regard to abortions. We're going to stand in the gap and protect our unborn here in Bristol, in the city of Bristol. So that, that's the idea in a nutshell. And that's what lesser magistrates, like city council members, have the duty to do when the state has an unjust law. They have to go in and stand in the gap. And there's plenty of examples of interposition throughout American history, where, you know, lesser magistrates are standing in the gap to protect their people from unjust laws that come down from on high. So that's kind of the basics, but I'm not going to talk about that so much today. I want to talk about my experience with city council. So this is really for people who already kind of understand that they're thinking about, well, how can I go and speak to city council? What should I know? You know, I've never done it before. So what happened was, like I said, we went and spoke publicly. And afterward, like during the speech that I made, I said, I'd like to sit down with you all and discuss what you can do to protect the unborn in the city of Bristol. So we went a couple of times, and I got an email from the city manager. And I'll say this just by way of practical advice. It ended up in my spam folder, my junk folder, so I didn't get it right away. So if you're contacting your city council members, you might want to check your spam folder or junk folder, just in case it ends up in there. For some reason, it did, even though I emailed them, it didn't show up in my inbox. So I missed it for a few weeks. So anyway, so I got an email from them and set up a meeting, not with any of the city council members, but they set up a meeting with the city manager and the city attorney for me. And what I learned in that meeting was that the city manager and city attorney are very important players, at least in Bristol, Tennessee. But I imagine it's really for most cities in the way that they're made up. Because the city attorney is the person who's going, who would be able to write a city ordinance that would outlaw abortion. And in this case, the city attorney also advises the city council on legal matters, so lawmaking, ordinance making, as well as advises the police to enforce city ordinances. So the city attorney has a lot of influence power over city council and the police in the city. So in this case, for her, it was all about, it was all about her, the city attorney. Whatever she believed is pretty much what's going to go here. Because if she said to the city council, hey, you shouldn't vote in favor of this ordinance, well, then they probably wouldn't. Fact of the matter is, though, she wouldn't even approve or write an ordinance for them to even consider. So in the story of what our city council, or really our city manager and city attorney said there in Bristol, was, their opinion was that Roe versus Wade is the law of the land, and they can do nothing about it. Okay? That's not really a surprise that they said that. They're, of course, very wrong about that. Roe versus Wade is not the law in any way, shape, or form. Roe versus Wade is the Supreme Court's opinion. It's not federal law. So that's not really relevant to this issue. Even if it was federal law, there's still the concept of interposition, where you're standing in the gap between an unjust law from the higher magistrates, and you, as a lesser magistrate, are going to protect the people who are being oppressed or abused, or in this case, allowed to be murdered because of the unjust law. So, you know, you can raise a question like this to your city council. Well, if the Supreme Court said it's okay to kill two-year-olds, would you do anything about it? Like, if there was a daycare in your city, and parents would bring their two-year-olds there, and the facilitator of the daycare would murder them, would you do anything about that? Would you say, well, you know, the Supreme Court said it's okay, so it must be okay? Yeah, makes you wonder. But that's something to bring up to them. That's an important argument to make, is that would you listen to Supreme Court, no matter what they say? Because it is the opinion of the city attorney in Bristol and many other people in America that the Supreme Court is the infallible and final interpreter of what the Constitution means. So whatever the Supreme Court says it means, it therefore means it, no matter what they say. That's ultimately the position that they take. They take the position that the Supreme Court is an infallible interpreter of the Constitution and the final arbiter on all constitutional questions. So that was kind of the thing that they told me. They said, we can't do anything. But then the city manager said, you should go talk to state representatives. Okay, which I am doing, but that's the side point. Doesn't really make any sense, though, does it? He's saying, well, we can't do anything because Roe versus Wade is the law of the land, but the state can do something. Well, if Roe versus Wade was really the law of the land, what could the state do, according to their opinion, according to their view of Supreme Court, that it's the high ruler, the high king? Of course, they're right, though. The state can do something, but they're also wrong in saying that the city can't do anything. Both the state of Tennessee and the city of Bristol can do something about this. Just a matter of, are they willing to? So the city of Bristol was unwilling to. They were unwilling to do this. And the question is, well, why not? Well, they're unwilling because they're going to get into legal battles. And the city attorney cares much more about staying out of legal trouble than she does about the unborn. She'd rather have kids be murdered in the city than have to be sued as a city. That's just the fact, that's just the facts. So that's what she cares about. So ultimately, that's kind of what happened. So they told me not to, they told me pretty much, they can't do anything, they won't do anything, and all that. So what's that mean for you all who are thinking about doing city council meetings, talking to your city council? Keep an eye on who the city attorney is. You want to figure out who they are and get to know them, befriend them, and try to be influential over them. At least here, she is the key player here. She is the key player. That does not mean that the rest of the city council are not important, because they are. Because ultimately, they are the people who vote, whether the ordinance passes into law or not in the city. But your starting point, who's going to be the key player on whether this even goes anywhere or nowhere, is your city attorney, and perhaps your city manager. The city attorney, like I said, is important because they influence the city council, who votes on ordinances, and she influences the police, who would enforce the ordinance if it was passed. So if somehow, you know, a city ordinance was passed by a city council, but the city attorney didn't think that it should be enforced, she could say to the police, hey, don't enforce this. You're going to get into legal trouble. And then the police may not enforce it, right? Her influential power is very strong. It's very high. So you want to be really keying in on the city attorney as a starting point, and also all your city council members as well. They're all very important, obviously. You need to get everybody on board and people who will vote this. And then also, when you're talking to your chief of police as well, in terms of the enforcement of these things, if it was to be passed. So there's a lot of key, there's a lot of moving parts in this, a lot of players in it. But that's really, really important. So what happened after that? We had that meeting with the city attorney and the city manager. So what I did in that meeting is I gave them this, I'll pull it up here on the screen. I gave them this, this thing, and it was put up in a binder. I basically gave them a biblical and logical case that abortion is murder, to start with. I'm not going to go through all this because it's very long, but basically gave biblical argumentation that, you know, it's murder, logical things, that it's obvious, there's major inconsistencies for people who are for abortion. They are upset about miscarriages, but celebrate abortions. You know, they'll console their friend who has a miscarriage, but they'll celebrate their friend who purposefully kills their child. You know, we had a case right around this time when I met with them, where a guy in a neighboring town in Kingsport, Tennessee, he beat up this woman who was pregnant, and he killed her baby, but she didn't die. The mother didn't die. And this guy was charged with murder, murder of the fetus, right? That's so inconsistent, because just down the street in Bristol, there's a guy who murders mothers' babies all the time, and yet he's not charged with anything, right? Same exact thing. The only difference is, the mother didn't want her child to be killed by this guy who beat her up, versus, you know, the abortionist, where mothers pay him to kill their child. Now, if you're watching this video and not listening, just FYI, I'm going to scroll through this. There are some graphic images of killed babies, because I wanted to include that in the binder so that these people are not numb to this. So just FYI, I'm going to scroll past these photos of unborn babies who have died. So here we go. So after that, I included in here a summary of the doctrine of lesser magistrates. This was pulled from Matt Truella's book, which is called The Doctrine of Lesser Magistrates. This is in the back of the book. I just added a few things here and there. But basically, they gave them a little summary of what it is, how they can interpose, just so they have some foundation there. And then beyond that, I added in the precedent for sanctuary cities for the unborn, which is basically just a bunch of examples of lesser magistrates interposing for the sake of, you know, justice on different issues besides abortion, like the fugitive slave law in 1850, prohibition in 1933, and so on, and then sanctuary cities now for immigration, as well as kind of for the unborn. People are starting to work on that, but it hasn't really happened in any meaningful way yet. People banning vaping products, e-cigarettes, like in San Francisco, which would be precedent for banning, you know, abortifacient pills or something like that, about something that you're going for. And then I do a critique of the pro-life movement a little bit, that there are some faulty presuppositions that you have to get rid of Roe versus Wade. It's kind of the idea. And then I have some additional reading sources for them. So that's kind of what I included in there at the meeting. I have no idea whether they read that or not, but I did summarize that when I talked to them, but didn't go through everybody, because that's kind of a lot. So like I said in that meeting, they basically said, we're not going to do anything. Not going to do anything. Go talk to a state representative. So I wrote them a letter, and I'm going to go through this with you all, because I think this is important, to speak this way to civil magistrates, especially when they refuse to do justice. So I'm going to read this letter and maybe make some comments on it. This is what I wrote to them after that meeting, to implore them to change their mind. So this was a letter to the Bristol, Tennessee city magistrates. I said, thank you for taking the time to meet with me and my wife to discuss the issue of abortion in Bristol, Tennessee. Thank you as well for directing me to the state representative's offices. It's also not a bad idea, if you're a man watching this, to bring alongside us solid Christian women, whether it be your wife or another sister in Christ, to help with this, because that way, not that it needs to be this way, but it does help somewhat with rhetoric when they see women making these arguments as well. Of course, if they think that your arguments are false because you're a man, they're committing a fallacy of an ad hominem circumstantial. They're discrediting you, not because of your arguments, but because of your gender. But nevertheless, people are fallacious. You want to just avoid those if you can upfront. So bringing a solid Christian woman to be with you would be good. And if your woman listens to this, that's great. You can do it. I'd bring a man with you. Trying to have a man and a woman together is a good idea, I think, in these types of meetings, if at all possible. So I said, moving on, I said, I would like, however, to speak once again about the issue of abortion and how it should be dealt with by you at the city level. I understand that you believe that Roe versus Wade is the law of the land, because you believe that the Supreme Court justices are the final arbiter of what is constitutional, and that their decisions deserve our unquestioned obedience, regardless of what they rule. That is exactly what their position is, ultimately. That's what it is, that if the Supreme Court says it, we have to obey it without question. Okay? Therefore, the Supreme Court ultimately is their god, FYI. Moving on, I believe that there are two major problems with this way of thinking. There's one, historical problems, and two, ethical problems. So here are the historical section. Historical, you told me that the Supreme Court's purpose is to be the final arbiter of what is constitutional. I do not believe that to be historically accurate summation of their role. Thomas Jefferson wrote on this subject in a number of places. Jefferson wrote in his letter to Mr. Jarvis in September of 1820, and here's a quote from Thomas Jefferson. "You seem to consider the judges the ultimate arbiters of all constitutional questions, a very dangerous doctrine indeed, and one which would place us under the despotism, as tyranny, of an oligarchy. Our judges and their power are the more dangerous, as they are in office for life and are not responsible, as the other functionaries, to the elective control. The Constitution has erected no such single tribunal, knowing that to whatever hands confided with the corruptions of time and party, its members would become despots or tyrants. It is more wisely made, all the departments co-equal and co-sovereign within themselves, than the legislative or executive functionaries act un- When the legislative or executive functionaries act unconstitutionally, they are responsible to the people in their elective capacity. The exemption of the judges from that is quite dangerous enough. I know of no safe depository of the ultimate power of the society, but the people themselves." So Thomas Jefferson explicitly addressed this question and says, no, the Supreme Court is not the final arbiter on all things constitutional. That would make us an oligarchy. That is a rule ruled by the few. If they're saying, you know, whatever we say is true, so we can twist the Constitution however we want, or add things that aren't even there, and say that they are there, and make you obey our commands, that would make them tyrants, which he's right. Jefferson said, in another place, to Judge Spencer Rohn, this is November of 1819, he wrote this, quote, "If the judiciary is the last resort in relation to the other departments of the government, then indeed is our Constitution a completely fellow de so." Here's the key part, "The Constitution, on this hypothesis, is a mere thing of wax in the hands of the judiciary, which they may twist and shape in any form they may please. It should be remembered as an axiom of eternal truth in politics, that whatever power in any government is independent, is absolute also. In theory, only at first, while the spirit of the people is up, but in practice, as fast as it relaxes, independence can be trusted nowhere but with the people en masse. They are inherently independent of all but moral law." But the key part here is he's saying, if it's true that the Supreme Court is the final arbiter on all constitutional questions, that would make the Constitution a thing of wax, meaning that it's not actually any fixed standard, which is not what the Constitution was intended to be, clearly. So I go on, "Jefferson was in clear opposition to judicial supremacy. The myth of judicial supremacy is logically incompatible with the supremacy of the written Constitution. According to the myth of judicial supremacy, the Constitution means whatever five Supreme Court justices claim it means, and all other governmental actors are duty-bound to abide by that supposed meaning, even if it's in clear conflict with the actual meaning of the Constitution, until such time as five justices revise it, or a constitutional amendment overrides it." Right? So the majority of the Supreme Court, they get to decide, so that would be five, five before. That's, of course, not what was intended by this way of government in America. "This definition is compatible with Jefferson's own views on the subject", which he said again, quote, "You seem to consider the judges the ultimate arbiters of all constitutional questions, a very dangerous doctrine indeed, and one which would place us under the despotism or tyranny of an oligarchy. If judicial supremacy is a true doctrine, then our nation is an oligarchy, where five justices decide what the laws are, just as Jefferson noted. This is clearly contradictory to the form of government the founding fathers intended, as noted by Jefferson in the above quotations." Secondly, ethical problems with what they are doing at the city level. There's a major ethical problem with your reasoning against establishing a city ordinance against abortion as well. Your reasoning for not outlawing the murder of babies is because people in higher magistrate are telling you, you're not allowed to save babies' lives. The problem is that you won't protect babies from being murdered, because some people say you can't. Even if Roe versus Wade was the law, and I do not believe that it is for the reasons stated above, it should not matter. If there was a daycare in Bristol where moms and dads could bring their kids, and the director of the daycare would cut the children into pieces, would you put a stop to that? What if the Supreme Court said it was constitutional, completely legal, for moms and dads to have daycare directors rip their children apart? According to your logic, you would tell me that you can't do anything, because you'd be challenged in court. Yet this is what you're telling me with regard to the unborn babies who are having their limbs ripped off and who are being poisoned to death. "I was just following orders" is not a legitimate excuse. "I understand completely that you would face legal battles over making a city ordinance that bans abortions, but people are dying. Where is the courage and heroism to stand up for children who are being murdered? You are all offering up unquestioned submission to the higher magistrates. The heroes of history did what was right, even if that meant standing firm against the civil government." Corrie Ten Boom famously hid Jews from the Nazis. This was illegal, yet she did it anyway to save lives. She was a hero. What would you do in her situation? Would you simply follow the orders of the Nazis and allow Jews to be slaughtered? After World War II, the Nuremberg Trials were held to prosecute Nazis for their heinous crimes. Many Nazis tried to appeal to what is now called the Nuremberg Defense. That is, they would say, I was only following orders. The Nazis tried to acquit themselves by saying that it wasn't their fault. The higher authorities had ordered them to do it. This was no excuse for them, and it's not an excuse for you or for anyone else who would employ such reasoning in order to do nothing about stopping the murder of children in your city. God says to civil magistrates, including you, in Psalm 82, verse 2 through 4. "How long will you judge unjustly and show partiality to the wicked? Give justice to the weak and the fatherless; maintain the right of the afflicted and the destitute; rescue the weak and the needy; deliver them from the hand of the wicked." When the magistrates told Peter and other apostles to do something wrong, they rejected their command and said in Acts 5:29, "We must obey God rather than men." "You all said that when it comes to making laws, we sometimes need to, quote-unquote, 'leave morality at the door.'" The city manager said that. This statement is in and of itself a moral statement regarding your approach to lawmaking, and it's therefore self-refuting. Doing nothing to stop abortion in your city is the moral decision that you are currently making. It's a sin of omission, leaving undone what ought to be done. That's super crucial. They're saying, we need to leave morality at the door when it comes to lawmaking. Well, what they've done there is made a moral decision to do nothing about people being murdered, which indeed is a moral decision, an immoral one at that. "I, with all humility and respect, speaking up for the unborn who are unprotected, am calling you to repent of allowing children to be murdered in your city and to do justice by protecting them by any means possible. God the Father says of Jesus's attitude towards kings or civil magistrates, "Do not do justice," in Psalm 2, 10 to 12. "Now therefore, O kings, be wise; be warned, O rulers of the earth; serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling; kiss the Son, lest he be angry, and you perish in the way; for his wrath is quickly kindled; bless her all who take refuge in him." God holds all people accountable, including you as civil magistrates. In order to take refuge in him, that is Jesus, you must repent of your sins, that is, hate your sins and be sorrowful over them before God, because they are wrong and violate God's perfect standard, and turn from them all, and trust in Jesus Christ to save you, instead of trusting in your own good works to save you. You cannot save yourself by being a good person, because you're already guilty before God by breaking His commandments, for example, lying, taking His name in vain, stealing, lusting, et cetera. Repent and trust in Jesus alone for your salvation, and He will forgive you of your sins. Part of that repentance should include taking a stand for the unborn to protect them from being slaughtered." A little stop there for a second. Tried to include in there a brief gospel presentation. This is really important, because I really think, at this point, the only civil magistrates who are going to actually have the guts to fight for this are people who are regenerated. It just doesn't seem likely that somebody who's not regenerated is really going to have the guts to stand up for the unborn consistently and to do it biblically as a civil magistrate. Civil magistrates should be Christians. Okay? Very clearly from this text you and I included in here, but Psalm 2, Psalm 82, Psalm 110, those texts really clearly teach that the civil magistrate needs to be Christian. They need to kiss the Son. They need to do what God says. And non-Christians, of course, hate God and cannot submit to God's law. Romans 8 says that. "With all humility and respect, I care for each and every one of you, and want all of you to be saved and forgiven in Jesus. I pray for all of you. Please do not take my words in this letter as harsh or hateful, because they are not. There are said to you out of love for you, love for God, and love for the unborn people who are murdered in our own backyard. I'm simply asking you to stand up and be the heroes that God will approve of, the heroes that will protect people from being killed, even if it makes their lives more difficult. Please consider these things carefully, as lives are on the line. With all respect, love, humility, John O'Rourke." So that's what I sent to them and received zero response from them. So again, this sort of thing is important to do, talking to city councils. If I did it again, this is what I would do. I would contact them privately first, before going to public meetings. I would contact them privately first and try to get a meeting or two with them, see how they go. If they don't go well, if they say stuff like what they told me, I would go to public city council meetings, at least for a while, and make it known publicly to everybody what they believe. And I would even say stuff like I said in this letter, you told me that you should leave morality at the door when it comes to making ordinances and such. People need to know that, because that way, next election season for your city council, you can hopefully replace them with somebody better. So that's really important, too. Be aware of your local elections and who's running for city council, and maybe put Christians forward to run for city council, who will do what's right here. So, okay, so there's that. And then I would, if it was going well, I'd keep talking to them privately and try to get an ordinance written up. I'd try to help them write an ordinance that's good, be a good counselor to them. And then, like I said, you want to talk to the city council members. You want to talk to the chief of police, and get them all prepared to pass this into law and then enforce it. And that's pretty much the end of it. The main thing is, is to have a good- And that's pretty much the end of it, the main thing is, is to have a good, um, it's a good city ordinance, um, that actually bans abortion in the city. So there's no exceptions to it, and um, that's something that, um, I believe Pastor John Speed. Um, is writing a book on that, I actually have the rough draft of it. Um, but once he gets that out, that should be a good help to everybody on sanctuary cities and what it's, what it's gonna look like. So he's, he's uh, he's developing that uh for the benefit of, of Christians doing this as well. So, um, I think with that, I'll go ahead and, and wrap it up, uh, I know there's kind of a lot to this. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me, um, you can go to uh CR one oh one radio dot com. And look under the podcast and Full Armor Radio is on there, and at the bottom of, of my podcast page, there is a contact form. Fill that out and I'll get an email and I can, and interact with you, um, I've spoken to people already over, uh, over the internet. I've spoken to people on like Google Meet, like video calls from all, from, you know, various places in the country, kind of talking about this in more detail. Please reach out, if you're thinking about doing this sort of thing, please reach out, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, it's really important work to do. But I would say this as well, um, besides just city stuff, really try to focus on your state as well, because your state is actually the, the. The place where they can make laws that will actually treat it as murder. Uh, meaning that anybody who kills an unborn baby will be tried for murder just as if they killed a born person. That's where true justice can end up happening. At the city level, they're not going to be putting murderers to death or anything like that. What they can do is ban, you know, abortion, they can impose fines, uh, but they're not gonna be able to, you know. Execute people or, or deal with murderers, they don't deal with murderers, um, on that level usually. Um, in fact, I don't know of any city that does. City, city law and stuff like that is very confusing, um, it's very different depending on the city. So it's not necessarily the case that my experience will match up perfectly with yours, I'm hoping that this is helpful. Um, I, I asked somebody when I was trying to figure out more things, I asked a, a lawyer, Christian lawyer, and I said, I'm kind of trying to find somebody who's an expert. On like city law and counties and how they work and what they do, and he's like, there's nobody who's an expert on that. So the, it's kind of a, a very hard, hard thing to figure out, that's why when I, when I was doing this, it was just kind of figuring it out as I go. Hopefully this helps you, if you're preparing to do this, that you can have a little better strategy than what I did, um. Ultimately, keep pushing forward, be winsome, use the Bible, use the gospel, you know, show them. Show the city council what they need to do. And pray, pray for them, pray that God will do justice, um, there's a proverb that says, uh, many seek the face of a ruler. But it's from the Lord that man gets justice, remember that, okay? God turns the, the hearts of kings like streams of water in his hand. That's what we need to remember, um, even, even these people who do nothing now, God can still change them and make them do right. If we, if we pray to him. So I hope that was helpful, and like I said, if you have any questions, please contact me, you can learn more about the ministry at fullarmorministries.org. And thanks so much for listening and God bless you.